Of June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three to everybody out there in the virtual audience. Sorry for the delay. We've had a few little technical problems here. So tonight, we're not going to be able to have a video relationship with you from council chambers, but we'll have audio only. Um, we can see you okay. We can hear you fine. Um, and we'll recognize you when you raise your hand during that part of the discussion. Uh, no, my bad. Let me retract that. This is going to be chat only from the audience other than the presenters. You need to be in the actual council chambers room to have a back and forth with the planning board members or staff. You can interact with us by chat. And Carolyn Miss, the planning office staff and myself will be able to receive those. And then we'll um, put them out loud to the other planning board members. So everyone has heard. Um, so that being said, um, today's planning, every planning board meeting usually starts off with a time for public comment. Um, and we start with people who are in the the audience here. There's one person in our room here is the applicant for the main um, item on the agenda. Is there anyone out there in the Zoom? Who would like to make a comment that is not related
No.
to the situation on the agenda?
So um, can I, oh, wait. Want to clarify, um, there was a question in the chat about being able to see the presentation. The presentation will be able to be viewed because there'll be a screen share. It's just the video monitor is not working in council chambers to project the room, but it will project the presentation and the audio. Um, and so chat comments can come in um, to the chair or myself, and um, those will be read during public comment.
Okay. So hearing no public comment. Um, we will open up tonight's hearing for a site plan review to add a second detached unit by Bill Sweet and Valerie Gintis at fifty-nine Lincoln Ave, Northampton Map ID twenty-five C zero five one. And so does the applicant? Well, first, maybe we should, do we want to hear about the uh, the earlier hearing today at the zoning board or?
Um, I can give that uh, uh, presentation either before or after, but the zoning board did grant the special permit for the change of use. And so that related to the proximity of the structure to the lot line, and it required a special permit because there were already existing nonconformities. And this is making essentially a worse nonconformity because it's coming, the living space would come closer to the lot line. The zoning board did grant the permit. So your jurisdiction in this is site plan is about the technical aspects, not about the use or the location of the structure, because the zoning board already reviewed that piece of it. So you're looking at this six eleven section for two family um, standards um, in your review.
Very good. Thank you. So does the applicant have a presentation?
I'm happy to do my best. I would not say this is my area of expertise in the slightest. Um, so we have, um, we've had our house on Lincoln Ave since two thousand and five. We absolutely love our neighborhood. During COVID, we realized how very small our house was. Um, and so we did a series of renovations. Um, and one of those renovations was taking our two car plus garage and creating a rec room out of about two thirds of it, which was a lifesaver. Um, and so now we um, want to take the other third of the existing structure, so not changing the footprint and put in a kitchenette and a bathroom so that it can be a separate unit. Um, and so that is why we're here to answer questions and address any concerns the group may have.
And can you put on the screen share your plans?
Sure. Um. Yes, one second.
Need help with that.
Okay.
Great.
Uh, hopefully, this is what you're looking for. Um, the uh, white outline is the existing structure and the people door, as we call it, exists as well. Where we've put in the four windows currently is um, a wall. And in the white space is our garage door. So essentially from the outside, what the change is is the garage door will go away and we will have four windows um, in its place. So it'll be more attractive, certainly. Um, it'll have two egresses. It'll have light on all sides and more functional as a space. Do you need more details than that?
I'll have a picture of the existing building for you.
I do. Uh, do I have a picture? Do we, hold on.
You might need to stop and then restart screen share.
I do in my text. Hold on. Sorry to keep you all.
Hey, we understand that, as you said, this is a normal procedure for you. So.
I usually try to seem more put together at least. Um. Okay.
Is that why your co-applicant Bill didn't come today?
He should have. I'm realizing right now, at the moment where you're standing here thinking, I don't know how to do this. Um. Uh. Let me. I have it on my phone. Can I show it to you visually?
Yeah, no, it's probably okay. I had a chance to go by the site today and I saw the building. Um, so it's a basic garage. Go back to that picture that showed the garage door.
Yeah. Um. Also, uh, Bill, if you can um, share the picture with me?
No.
No, he can't. Okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I can pull this up from our site.
This garage.
So this is the, the rendering we did of the current garage front. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. And that's going to become a wall.
Yep. So essentially, those four garage windows will move over. The door will go away.
Yeah. How are you gonna handle like the plumbing, the drainage and waste from the new bathroom?
Yes, thank you. Um, we need to um, drill in our driveway down and we are connecting the pipes um, across the driveway into our existing basement sewage system.
Okay.
Um, which then eventually ties to the street, but the tie-in is going to go through the house, through the basement and then through our main sewer waste dump. Yes.
Great, great. Probably the same thing with the electricity is probably connected that way now also.
We already have, um, we already have solar panels on the garage and we have a separate panel box for electricity that controls the um, solar panels and the electricity in that space. And it's all been brought up to code.
Subpanel from the main house.
Probably, yeah, probably rather than a drone drop. Yep. Okay. Hey, we're getting there, Carol. Going around the house. We're almost to the front. Yeah. There's the solar.
Those, the electric panel.
I think it's okay. It's all right. Yeah. Um, other questions from the board members on this application?
I mean, DPW had a couple of comments. You've seen those.
Um, it's about the sewer. Yes.
Basically, just about the uh, sewer line connection and then the water line connection. So make sure that you saw there. Demo that we issued a couple of days ago.
Yes, and we have um, in your files, our nearest, our closest abutting neighbor wrote a letter for the files as well, which I think was sent to both, to both boards tonight. Um, and we have a builder who is fantastic and has done work in our house and does impeccable high-quality work. So we're confident in his subs and his primary work.
You need to see your building?
Scott Nickerson.
Yep.
He's great, but you can't not till we're done. Yeah. Nobody can.
You could do it in the public record now, so.
Yeah, right.
If the board remembers about just about the time of COVID, two years ago, uh, two houses down came before us for a similar secondary unit.
Yes.
In this neighborhood, and you can actually see it from there. They're still working on that uh, accessory. First time I met you, huh?
Potato barn?
No, no, it wasn't a potato barn. This is another one. So.
So yeah, in our neighbor, in our neighborhood, we have um, long skinny plots, which I learned had to do with oxen many years ago. It was hard to turn oxen around for farming. So the plots in our neighborhood were very long, so they could do a long row and then turn the oxen around. Um, so the houses are close together with long yards, things I don't need to know in life. Um, but we have, we have converted our garage to this recreational room. Our neighbor next door does. And the neighbor next to them have, has also done that. So um, two doors down is the non-conforming structure. It's two stories, much bigger. Ours is no change to the footprint of, or the roof. It's just the change of use which has triggered a variety of conversations.
Good. If, if there's no other questions right now for the board, we'll turn it over to the public. All right. So we'd like to open it up for public comment now. If there's anybody in the audience who would, who's here in the audience in council chambers who'd like to speak for against this project or anybody out in the Zoom room who would like to make a comment via chat. Um, please let us know. Okay. Hearing none. We'll move back to the applicant. Any more questions? Before we move to close the public hearing? Pretty straightforward. Okay. Is there a motion?
Close the public hearing?
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing, which means we can't ask you any more questions or the public. So uh, any more discussion on that motion? All right, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Unanimous. All right. Any opposed? No, it's unanimous. Okay. Um. So thanks. Yeah, it seems to be a pretty straightforward change and something that we are really um, kind of promoting in the city, um, more dwelling units closer to town. Uh, they have asked for a, have they asked for a waiver or we're just not around the traffic study because of the small?
Um, they didn't address traffic mitigation. Um, so I, I recommended that this, I mean, this is a very small unit comparable to accessory the four previous accessory dwelling units that were allowed by right without providing traffic mitigation. So you have the ability to exempt them from this.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is what's, is this one of those ones that's in the category, if it was connected, that it wouldn't even be a review? It would have been by right. It's just because it's detached. Okay.
And normally we ask for a thousand dollars in lieu of uh, traffic mitigation, but in this situation, because it's so small, um, we're just going to forego that.
Um, it's so small, the person couldn't even own a car, right?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. Okay, so I, I don't know if that needs to be a condition or the minutes just state then that.
That would be part of the decision.
Okay. All right. Other items, issues? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll do it. Um, so I moved that we approve the site plan review to add a second detached unit at fifty-nine Lincoln Ave, Northampton Map ID twenty-five C dash oh five one. Um, exempting the one thousand dollar traffic mitigation amount.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion's remains their second. All right. Any discussing? We're all good. Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Right. All right. Well, thank you for coming before us.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I love our community. I love our street. And so thank you.
Great. Bill, good seeing you. Thanks for coming.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
It's developed an ox with a tighter turning radius now. Is that the issue?
Oh, Jack. Zero radius box.
Alrighty, um, we have another item of business that comes before the board, which is a review of uh,
A zoning amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm trying to pull it up.
Yep. I imagine the folks here in the room are here to kind of weigh in maybe on the, the flood insurance program, the national. Yep, I want to make sure you're in the right room.
But I'm not sure that's the.
About the flood insurance program. Okay. All right. It's likewise in the corner. Okay.
You'll let us know at the end whether it was possible to get any more information.
Did we ask questions or is it not?
You will be eventually be the last. I don't know how much we'll be able to drill down to the details of your specific situation, but um, Carolyn is a wealth of information. If she doesn't answer them tonight, she'll, she'll point you to somebody else in the city who will help with that because certainly
Having other technical.
The, the planning office has been dealing with the flood zone regulations and zoning for quite some time now.
Uh, no, I'm good. Thanks. Um. Hi. Save his words for later. Um. Okay, so I had my Adobe's not working. So I'm just going to go to the um, uh, just grab the files from um, elsewhere, but to start the conversation.
To start the conversation, this, so there's a zoning package in front of you that um, creates um, text changes that would create a um, what's we're referring to as a national flood insurance um, program overlay and a corresponding map that shows where the overlay will exist. Um, the text chain and, and the reason for this introduction is going, this, the zoning, both the text and the map will relate to and be exactly the same boundaries as our current special conservancy zone that covers the one hundred year flood plain. Um, actually, the NFIP overlay will not cover as much as of the five hundred year flood plain as um, our special conservancy zone does. Um, the reason we need to uh, adopt these measures is so that we can be compliant with the flood insurance, national flood insurance um, requirements and be, and residents in Northampton can be eligible for insurance. So um, this is, this specific language is coming from MEMA and FEMA. And we really don't have a choice about adding it, but we're creating a separate layer because knowing down the road that there might be other changes that come in, it would just be easier to just plunk it into this special overlay instead of going in and trying to change every single reference to the special conservancy district and all the other districts in our zoning. So um, it, it require, it's really, and, and what's interesting about this, it's really all about buildings. So the insurance program only covers insurance um, for buildings, not parcels. And it, and um, there's a restriction for no new residential units are allowed in the flood plain in our current special conservancy district. This overlay doesn't change any of the use restrictions that we currently have, but it adds language about situations when someone files for a building permit and you're building below base flood elevation, for example. You have, and if you're asking for what is deemed a variance from this program, then you have to follow certain procedures and your insurance rates might go up if you're asking for a waiver or a variance, I should say, that's their language um, from this program. So it's all really evaluated at the building level because that's what's being insured. Whereas our zoning is broader and we look at all kinds of activities that might happen in the, in the flood plain or barns or things that aren't typically covered in the insurance um, program. So that's the, that's what both of these ordinances do. And then we have to go, we want to make sure we reference this new text throughout the entire code. So there's some, you can see just minor insertions of see also this new section, because if someone's looking at what the requirements are in the special conservancy district, they also should um, or the um, or the flood plain overlay, we also want to make sure there's this other section that's now being adopted. And once we adopt this, we have to send it off to the state and then they'll say, okay, we can continue to provide insurance to residents in Northampton.
So a lot of this language is prescriptive?
It's all prescriptive.
So I see like one um, three fifty sixteen eleven base flood elevation data for subdivision proposals. When proposing subdivisions or other developments greater than fifty lots or five acres.
That's all them.
That's all them because, because our special conservancy doesn't allow any new residential.
Right. Right.
So it doesn't quite jive.
Right.
Okay.
But we have to have that language.
Right. Because we're not getting rid of the other zone. It's just, it's just too.
It's on top of, yeah.
Their zoning, their language doesn't trump ours.
No, I mean, it's almost in addition, it's in addition to, so you know.
You can make further constraints.
Right, we have more constraints, as Chris pointed out. We don't allow new subdivisions. However, we have to just say that if there were a new subdivision ever, then the NFIP flood plain overlay standards.
Theoretically, they could go through a zoning variance.
Right.
To get through our part of it and then this.
Right. So um, that's, that's the basic um, uh, premise. And I can, I mean, it's, the text is long. I don't know if you want me to go through that.
Could you just screen share the map for us?
Yep. Um, just. Okay. May.
We've had our zoning in place around the flood plain restrictions for twenty-five, thirty-five years.
And they've changed over time.
Yep.
But the boundaries haven't really changed. I'm sorry, I'm just like spinning here.
During my time, there've been a few buildings that have been built in the flood plain, but I was very restricted about how they were built and how they compensated for land that is disturbed somewhere else.
You got to keep the same flood volume.
Right, right.
Right, so there's multi, so not only is there, are there plant, are there land use restrictions, there are also restrictions under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, so for building within the flood plain. And those are um, require what's called compensatory flood storage. If you're putting a mass in the flood plain, you have to compensate for that flood storage capacity that is no longer there somewhere else within the same reach of the river. And all of those regulations are under the Wetlands Protection Act and will still remain in effect. Um, so we've got several layers of requirements and then this is on top of that. Um.
All right. So the, the, the insurance, call it international flood insurance program. So is anything we're doing affect current insurance ability to get it? I mean, is it affecting the end user's ability to get or use insurance? Or is it, yeah, I get, I get that the text is prescriptive and we're adopting it in um, so that we're uh, compliant. Um, but does it affect anything to the end user currently?
Well, um, we've been told, so can you see that map? So this is very much like, this is all of our special conservancy zone too. So we already have this covered, but we're creating this overlay map on top of this. Um, so over the years, at various times, the flood insurance program has says to Northampton, well, you need to do this and this in order for residents in Northampton to be covered and be allowed to have insurance. And so we've made some of those changes over time. This is the biggest one, like they've revamped everything. And it was supposed to go through in twenty eighteen and we just kind of put it on the back burner because we were like, you know, we're more restricted in this. Why do we need to do this? And then they keep knocking on the door saying, no, 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 you need to um, adopt this. Um, or you know, you'll risk that um, residents who are in the flood plain and who want to get flood plain insurance. And, and then, and then um, so the things that came, um, so a few years ago, we had to establish a point person who was the flood. Um. Um, I forgot what the name of it was. Um, and so a specific person that would evaluate projects that come through. So the building commissioner is identified as that person. And then that person is also required to ensure that base flood elevation maps are presented every time a new project's built. And that was a new requirement um, that came in a few years ago. So um, so that, you know, survey work is done when new work within the flood plain is, is proposed or is completed as well. Um, and what was the other thing? Oh, so some people have asked um, what um, whether this will affect their rates? We can't dictate that. We don't know. That's completely. And then some people have asked whether they're going to be required to have flood insurance. Can they opt out? It's my understanding that um, it depend, you know, it's your own risk, you know, you buy insurance. However, sometimes when you buy a new property and you have bank financing, the bank mandates that you have flood insurance. And so um, if your house is um, identified as being within the flood zone and floodways and all of that.
We have no connection to like whether that's required or not. I mean, that could all change.
Right. And the other thing is, this isn't really land use. I mean, this isn't like standard land use. This text is all about insurance coverage, risk and all this stuff. Um, so.
So what we're uh, potentially adopting is basically something that we have to adopt to allow our residents to be able to get and continue to get flood insurance if they wish to.
Um. I think so. I don't want to be the expert on what their interpretation is going to be. It's either that or maybe the residents have to pay a lot higher premiums uh, or higher um, um, insurance policy on their insurance policies because we didn't, yeah. So that has sometimes been the case, but I don't want to um, assert that I understand exactly the ramifications of all of those.
Between the text and removing what could be a potential bureaucratic roadblock.
Sounds like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Remind me of the process that the planning board is part of now. The zoning.
Sure. So it's a, it's a zoning amendment and um, um. What happens is the planning board holds a public hearing. Legislative matters will have to hold a public hearing as well. That's going to be next week. Then your recommendation, along with legislative matters recommendation, will go back to full city council and this full city council is the legislative body that adopts any zoning regulations.
So people, the public will have other chances to weigh in on this and ask questions at these different hearings throughout the city. A lot of this seems to fall under the daily wake of the conservation commission, but I don't think they're really part of that process around a recommendation, right?
Right.
Because, just because of the wetlands kind of flavor of um, these areas.
Right.
Good, there's language in here that talks about that if you do get a variance warning that there could be a premium on your insurance up to twenty five percent of
Right.
higher, like, what is that called? Like, they just give us that and we're supposed to say that?
Yes, we, it's like, we're supposed to, on behalf of the, in program.
Go if that ever happens.
Right, on behalf of the program, we're presenting to the public.
Like this information.
What, well, yeah.
So if they like change that to like fifty percent, like we'd have to change our zoning again?
Yes.
Okay. Right.
And just if, oh, go ahead.
Well, just from kind of a much higher view, I thought because of uh all the flooding that's happening nationally and globally, I thought that the 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 Fed were certainly looking at not providing this kind of extensive insurance in the same way as we've done in the past. But it, it just seems like they're moving along in the same way. There's so people will continue to build in the floodplain if they can locally and if if they can get insured, which it seems like they can.
Yeah, except this language seems to talk about increase in rates for those who ask for variance or waiver. So maybe, you know, in previous, I'm speculating, but maybe across the country and other locations, people are granted permits in all sorts of floodplain areas. And this would come in and say, well, okay, your local jurisdiction may have approved that. And maybe you've shown that you should be getting this waiver, but your rates are going to go up to whatever it was.
Wildly different rates, obviously, like they're having a failure of the reinsurance market in Florida right now. Ah, it's not, we're not at the elevations where this is such a critical issue.
Right. Well, this, let's talk about the base elevation that you need to build that in the floodplain. And if you get a variance to go lower than that, then your rates are going to go up.
Yeah.
Okay. Which makes sense.
Thank you.
I want to save that with that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Um so yeah, I don't think we need to go, there's about eight pages of this. Most of them were kind of very small textual changes. Some a lot have to do just with the acronym of the NFIP and that language of the National Flood Insurance Program Overlay.
And adding definitions to all of their um floodplain functional, functionally dependent uses, historic structures, new construction, you know, all that stuff.
So um maybe at this point, we should open to the public and ask if they have some comments that perhaps we can answer tonight. Um but give you an opportunity to talk some more about this or understand where the city's going.
And after this, there are some chats.
Ah, okay, and after the people in the room um have their comments, then we'll go out to the Zoom. Who would like to go first? If you just state your name, come on up to the podium and state your name and your address, that would be great. Welcome.
Thank you, never did this before. My name is Lisa Schmidt. I live at six thirty four Riverside Drive. And I'm asking a question on my behalf of myself, but also a neighbor who couldn't be here tonight, who um I think the word overlay was confusing. And we were wondering whether it meant the map that dictates what the flood zone is considered is changing. Um and if it were how, and is there a way to compare the old map with the new map? And they're so like, it sounds like this is more a technical thing that you're discussing as in the overlay, which is a language overlay federally dictated. But we were wondering whether it had to do with the map itself.
Uh there, there will be this new overlay map that's created that's reflective of the FEMA mapped one hundred year flood elevation. So even, so you can't necessarily look at the map and see your house, whether it's in or out, because the flood elevations are based on on the ground data. So you actually have to go and pull the data and understand in space where on Riverside Drive your house is located relative to the map, the actual control points on the ground of where that flood line is. So um those, the FEMA has not changed the flood boundaries in Northampton. However, there, there has been a review. Um and we understand there may be some modifications to Northampton's flood, mapped floodplain. Um if that happens, that won't affect this change because it's really just identifying that. I mean, ultimately, we could shift the lines and the edges of this map. But really what's dictating the boundary is the actual determined flood um elevation on the property itself. And you have to find that by doing a survey um with, you know, on the ground to find out exactly where that line is.
It's probably most similar to what you would go through if you went to Conservation Commission and mapped the wetlands where it's sort of mapped. The state maps them, but you have to go out there and actually figure out and have someone who knows what they're doing map the boundaries.
And can put a stake in the ground and say, this is what this point is and this, and then you look, is this, is your house on this side or that side of that line? As opposed to using this picture on the screen to determine where it is.
Insurance companies do that too, I, I think, so.
As far as I know, I only know about my property, not my neighbors. It was not considered floodplain when I applied for insurance for my house originally. But there is a proposal going through the DPW at the moment, which is to change the riverfront to shore up the bank and move a sewer line um because there's been some bank erosion happening. And so they're, they're proposing to grade my land in a way that it wasn't before. And I, I'm wondering if that is going to be then surveyed in a new way and considered floodplain. Because it used to go out and have a big drop and they're proposing a gradual uh slope.
Interesting. So in a very practical way, you think the Mill River might be able to edge up towards your house, whereas before it was stopped by the bank.
I don't think.
Well, yeah, and typically that kind of thing doesn't change the floodplain boundary. I mean, so the flood water is going to come up and it'll top the bank. Or if it's a more gradual bank, it'll just creep up where um so I, that, those things don't. I mean, that's part of the Conservation Commission review to determine if there's an impact to the flood storage capacity on a property, then they have to compensate for that elsewhere. But that's the evaluation that they're going to be putting into the review or should have, I know it's been just submitted to um evaluate those kinds of things. Is this changing? Is this taking up storage capacity or isn't it? And so they're going to, they, I haven't looked fully at the plan, so I can't tell you if they addressed that, but that's certainly one of the requirements.
So those would be good meetings for you to attend. Unfortunately, the Conservation Commission meetings, right? What, if they open it up to a public?
Right, this wouldn't address that one way or the other.
Yep, but I think there's also a larger question of this is tying, this is creating a new overlay that is coincident with the firm map, but the FEMA map, which happens to also be pretty much the same as our current underlying district. There is nothing in this that says that FEMA can't and they probably will change the map over time. And they do that on some kind of cyclical basis for all different communities. I don't know. Does that mean we have to incorporate a new map when that happens?
Uh maybe, yeah, but it'll be easy enough to do because we'll just have.
Slot in, maybe, and we can decide whether to change the underlying.
Right.
Or not.
Right.
Yes, and just for the record, firm stands for federal insurance rate map. Right. Right, so and this is all federal, right? It's not City of Northampton at all and we can't.
And the other, yeah, the other piece of it is, we're talking in your particular situation is land. So you don't need to get insurance for land. The insurance is only given for buildings and, you know, occupied structures essentially.
And how would I find out when those conservation meetings?
You'll get a notice if you're in a butter or uh if it's on your property, you'll get a notice in the mail.
All right, thanks very much.
Yep.
Anyone else in the audience? Like, you're good? Okay, we're all learning a little bit tonight, for sure. Um and Carolyn, we have some people on chat.
Yes, so Andrea said, currently my neighborhood on Riverbank Road is owned special conservancy, which already has very particular rules and regulations regarding the building. Most of the neighborhood is under the floodplain designation that would require federal insurance. If one has a mortgage, we talked about there are a few houses, including my own, that are at an elevation is not required insurance. Is this suddenly going to change? So I think we just talked about them. Um Bob Richards, as far as a new, as new construction goes, we have been saving money over the years with the idea of trying to build a carport, which would most likely be allowed with our zoning, not a hundred percent sure if we would have to apply for a variance, but that was our idea. Is that going to change? Are we going to be penalized because we did not save money quickly enough to already have built something? Um so this relates to the fact that this isn't changing the rules around building structures in floodplains currently in Northampton. Um so if you're in the floodplain and you want to build a carport, you might not be able to do that. You have to, you have to do a whole engineering study to show um that you're not um that one, you're building to withstand the forces of floodwaters. Two, that you're, if you have to provide compensatory flood storage for that, so all of that stays in place.
But this new overlay we're talking about wouldn't change your ability to build that carport one way or the other. This overlay will just say, if you build a carport, your insurance might go up.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Right.
But that's a forces outside of the city.
Right, right. Okay, Sue uh said, chatted, as far as I can see, the map posted online did not show the relationship between the overlay and streets and neighborhoods. Is that information available? Um yes, we have um, we have the maps on our website that show this current special conservancy district, which is the same boundary as this. And so you can add whatever layers you want onto this uh onto your maps. Um.
And the M S G I S is usually pretty good about updating with current, I mean, I don't know that they have yet, but
Yeah.
You can overlay our G I S information with stuff from the state and feds.
Right, so FEMA, the FEMA map would be on there, yeah.
Theoretically, yeah. I mean, all those things have to be verified though, uh to the inch.
Right, so you would know again if your house was in or out. It's just conceptual. Um Andrea says, the map as it appeared on my screen did not have any identifying characteristics like streets, lots or buildings. From that, it was impossible to determine the boundaries of the areas being discussed here. The map just showed the outer boundary of Northampton and water areas is blue. So similar issue, I mean, um we could revise for city council, certainly the areas um that are, I mean, to show more clearly some landmarks. Um again, it's sort of, it covers this map just to describe more clearly. It covers about a hundred feet on either side of every perennial stream in the city. Um and the, of course, the Connecticut River floodplain that comes up almost up to Bridge Street. Um so that's the big blue swath along the Connecticut River is all this sort of low lying um farmland below Bridge Street. Um and then otherwise, it's along the uh Mill River and other perennial streams throughout um the city. So many times there are backyards that are within the, this area, but not structures. Sometimes there are structures. Um but particularly as it goes winds through the city, it's um a lot of.
Can we add an attachment that's just like an overlay of our street map?
Sure.
With that and just put a big like preference only or something on.
Yeah.
So it's useful for people.
And folks out there, you can go, you can search for M S G I S and you'll find a, an online viewer and that's where you can, you can put in your address. It'll go right to your house and there's different layers you can turn on to see them. I'm looking to see, see this stuff. Right?
Well, they have to have the FEMA stuff.
Yeah.
FEMA makes it hard.
So just a clarification, I think we answered this about the um one hundred and five hundred year elevations are not changing. Talked about that um and riverfront protection zones still stay in place under the Wetlands Protection Act. Um again, from Andrea, for a homeowner rather than a developer, how does this change our ability to maintain and improve our properties? Is there a specific list of um new items added to the S T zone that will affect our ownership, regular insurance or require flood insurance? So I think we talked about this and of course, development in the city is um blind to who's doing it. Development is development, so whether it's a homeowner or a developer or builder or a builder on behalf of a homeowner. Um so this doesn't affect anything. Um and in terms of what's restricted or what's allowed, because we have the underlying zoning, um this is just being added on top. And it doesn't, there's no way for anybody in the city to understand the insurance rates. And how will that be affected? Because it's not something the city develops and it oversees.
It's someone who lives in the floodplain, what they think is the floodplain wants to do any kind of construction or building or improvements. They just still need to file an application with the building inspector and go through whatever those regulations and permitting are.
Yep.
Um so a couple more, um Riverbank Road flood insurance um is through FEMA and reasonable required by our lender, as we talked about that. Um and regular homeowners insurance is not affected. So it's really just, it's, this is just about the flood insurance piece. Um eighty five, Andrea, eighty five Riverbank elevation does not currently require flood insurance since we receive a notice for the meeting. I'm assuming we're in the new district. Okay, so um um so even if you don't have insurance, your property, we notified all the people in that map because we're required to by law when we make a map change. So um many people received this notice. Um even if the backyard, the very corner of their property had this map on it or had a section of floodplain on it, those people got notified of this. That doesn't mean that anything is changing for their property. And in fact, for the most part, not much is changing. Um and so that's why people receive notice. Um but this, that doesn't mean that things are changing for the property. Um okay, um is there somewhere to find a simplified version of the changes and what they mean, rather than trying to interpret the official language? Um so um I guess that's what this hearing is about, because we have to have the specific language as it's going to be adopted. But Sarah LaValle in my office and or I can be available between now and the time council takes this up to try to explain further.
So I'm just verifying, they do have it on the M S G I S website. They do qualify that it's it's transcribed from paper maps. So again, you can't like rely on it.
Yes, right. And for a long time before it was digitized, all we had was the scanned version of the paper map. And then, of course, that was really.
Still download those on FEMA data.
Yeah, and those are from nineteen seventy eight, I think.
Generations.
Yeah, so.
So just to reiterate Carolyn's last response, yeah, for many of us, the language and zoning amendments, and especially federal zoning amendments can be a little daunting, um but, but it is what it is in that kind of language. So if you need some help in interpreting that or, you know, aligning it with your own personal situation, please get in touch with Carolyn or Sarah LaValle, who works with the Controversy Commission.
I think that's the end of the chats.
Often you're immature also will know a lot about this.
Especially down in Florida. Or in the seaport, why they have, don't get me started on the seaport. In Boston.
Oh, Boston.
All right, um.
Still okay out there? We're, we're good? Okay. All right, any other questions for the board for Carolyn? We're probably looking for a recommendation to uh move this on to the Legislative Matters Committee. I think David had a good suggestion of uh maybe for the legis, that we recommend with our recommendation that a better kind of slightly more detailed overlay of the city streets goes with, so.
So I think that um I think you would make sort of two separate, one comment and a recommendation, because your recommendation is going to full city council. What do you think about this? Cause your recommendation is going to full city council. What do you think about this change? So it's about the map change and the text. You could also suggest that, um, a map that, I mean, it would be, uh, we'll, we'll develop the map, but so I don't know that you need to make that as a recommendation.
It would just help the conversation probably for the councils, for the public. Yep. All right. Any more discussion about the text or the map changes? No. All right. Is there, uh, motion to close the public hearing? I think it's.
Yes, it is public hearing.
I would like to move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded by David. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? And is there a motion to recommend this to the city council as we discussed with, I don't think any edits at this point from our end? Seconded by. Thank you, Melissa. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Bye. All right. Well done. Thank you very much, Carolyn, for all your explanations, descriptions. Thank you for you two. You should to know a little bit more about some of the implications of this zoning. So that was very helpful. Um, and thanks for coming and sharing tonight with us.